Uh, Pastor Rodney Bight, Waterville Baptist Church, pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Daniel Beatty. Please stand.
Will you pray with me? Father in heaven, God, we acknowledge your presence today. We recognize Bible tells us that in the beginning, God created the heavens and the earth, and God, your earth reveals your glory. And Lord, today you've unleashed a little bit of the snow out of your vault in heaven. And so we thank you and praise you this morning that, God, we can give you glory and honor today. I do also know that the word of God tells us to pray for those who oversee us in government. So we pray for our county commissioners today that, God, you grant them wisdom and discernment, understanding, God, as to the best decisions possible. Uh, that would help our county be the best it could possibly for your glory and for your honor. So we thank for these men and women who serve so faithfully. Pray you'd richly bless them today in all that they do in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll now go to the mayor for the report from the county mayor.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, everyone. Two, three things for you today. First of all, uh, we're recognizing our thirty year employees, and we have four this year that are getting their thirty year pins. I'd like to call out their names, and if, when I do, if you would come forward up here, I'll get your certificate and pin to you, and we'll get the banner to take a quick photo. And Lori, uh, first one, your very own, Michael Hughes, Michael S. Hughes, thirty years of service. You can come on up. Uh, Melita Shaver, come on. I don't think she's here, but Nancy Stanfield. And Melissa Matthews and her son, Austin, is here to receive hers today. Of course, Melissa's in the register of deeds office. Nancy Stanfield and Melita are with the juvenile department. And I don't know where Mike still hangs his hat, but I guess they'll out sheriff's department.
This probably isn't customary, but I would like to say something, actually. Uh, short and sweet, just like Missy, all right? Keep it short and sweet. Uh, so, good afternoon, everybody. My, like I said, like, uh, Mayor said there, I'm Austin Matthews. I'm Missy's son, and I have the privilege of standing in, uh, to receive this honor for my mom. First off, thank you, Mayor, Commission Board, for recognizing, uh, mom's dedic- thirty-one years of dedication to the people of Bradley County. She couldn't be here today to receive this award because she's at the annual COAT meeting. Um, and she's been going to this for the past sixteen years. Uh, it's a meeting of all the clerks, trustees, registers, and things like that, um, so that she can continue to better the office that she's currently running for. Um, and I want to say a special thank you to the late Odell Swafford for taking a chance on my mom, a twenty-four, twenty-one-year-old girl, thirty-one years ago, and, uh, before I was even thought about. Um, and so also thank you to Raymond and Donna Swafford for their continued leadership, and also to the wonderful ladies that she worked with over out, throughout the years. Uh, most people count down the days or the years until retirement and things like that, but not my mom. She loves this county and the people of Bradley County so much, um, that she wants to run for election of, for register of deeds. And I was gonna tell a quick story here, but I'll keep it short and sweet, um, about how I used to play hide and seek with Ms. Gala Ward running around the office and, um, or how I used to sneak Mountain Dews from mom when she told me I couldn't have them when I was really little from the fridge they had in the office. Um, but I'll leave you guys with this. Thank you so much for recognizing my mom's dedication, and on May fifth, God bless y'all. Have a great day.
You'll get a bill for that commercial later. But thank you, and congratulations to Melita as you go out the door. Thank you for thirty years of service. We appreciate you. And Melita's gonna take Nancy's tour and share that with her also. We appreciate it. And of course, you too, Mike. Thirty years of service to Bradley County. It takes loyalty and commitment, something you don't find often these days. Um, I'd also like to wish a happy two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday to the United States Marine Corps today. Uh, you have a resolution coming around that should make about half of you happy. You remember a few months ago, uh, the controversy about taking a bank down at one of the fire projects on Menace Road, went on for a long time, and finally it was voted down because, uh, we decided we didn't want to spend the money to do it. I've worked out an agreement with the city, and that's what this resolution says. You'll have a week to read it. You don't have to worry about it today. But I'm asking someone to put it on the agenda, Howard Thompson. It's your district. Um, I've got an agreement worked out with the city. If we'll lease them a parking lot on Church Street that we do not use, um, they'll take down that bank, the trees and the bank and concrete on over further like some of you wanted to a few months ago, and it won't cost the taxpayers a dime. So I think the half that wanted to do it will be happy, and the ones that didn't really want to spend the money, it's tens of thousands of dollars, by the way, uh, should be happy also. So this should be a non-controversial resolution. If someone will put it on the agenda next week, I would sure appreciate it. And if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Commissioner Thompson to put it on the agenda.
Uh, and also, the parking lot at the archives building is what we're talking about. Um, the city wants to use it for a city parking lot, so we would lease it to the city. We would retain one reserved spot there so that when people are taking or picking up, uh, archives in the building, you know, county employees back and forth from time to time down there, there would be a, a reserved parking space there. Or if, uh, the sheriff employee happens to be down there today, he would have a reserved park. But the, the other six or eight spots, it's in that photo, however many there, they would eventually pave the parking lot, stripe it off, make it look good, and they would also take care of the nuisances that have been sort of an issue, Mike. So I think it's a no-brainer, really. Uh, give them the use of the parking lot for a X period of time, and whenever they get back to work on the dirt work on Menace Road, they'll take that bank down back to the property line and then angle it, you know, uh, at a, at an angle. Uh, and then the concrete would go over further, just like we were talking about doing earlier. So, uh, I appreciate it, and if, no one has any questions about that. If you do, I think Mr. Alford may have one, uh, Commissioner.
Yes, Mayor, I was just thinking out loud to myself, which is dangerous sometimes, but, uh, one, one parking spot may not be enough. I would suggest maybe we put one like we have out here, one for sheriff's deputy, one for somebody coming to be in archives. So we're maybe two spots.
I don't know what Mike said, but that, that would be fine. But remember, it's just gonna be a parking lot. I mean, it won't be full. It'll just be in and out people. Um.
I'd probably help you on that.
Go ahead.
You still have parking around the side and also.
Yeah, and in front.
There's additional parking to this, just that one.
We just wanted to make sure that one was dedicated, because there is always people going, I mean, not daily, but every once in a while, from time to time, someone taking stuff down there. And the parking spot that's on that drawing is near the back entrance, which would be closest for most people. Um, some people, the sheriff, for example, goes up the steps probably, but they can go in that back entrance and go up those steps also. So, um, we could do that. I'm not arguing against it. I don't really think it's needed with those other spots, but whatever y'all think. But other than that, it, the overall thing is it's a, I think a no-brainer, a great idea. So hopefully you'll support it next Monday. City hasn't approved it yet, but they're in favor of it. I think they'll, they're wanting us to approve first, and if we're interested and we approve it, then they'll come back and do the same thing. If there's no other questions, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to the reports from the committees and our districts. We'll start on the right. Commissioner Beatty, please.
Oh, I don't have nothing to report today.
Commissioner Hughes?
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing to report today.
Commissioner Alford?
Yes, second district's doing well. I'd just like to remind the people on the ad hoc committee meeting that we'll try to start our meeting immediately after we get through the meeting here this morning. So it might start, I guess, I think it's scheduled at one-thirty, but I'd like to get started as soon as our meeting here is over with the day. So if everybody that's on that committee quickly gets settled down so we can, uh, get started and get it over with. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Blake?
Good part, thank you.
Commissioner Collins?
Nothing to report in the third, thank you.
Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Chairman. I've just got a real quick, uh, Saturday's Household Hazardous Waste Day, twenty-twenty-five, is in the books. Two-hundred-and-fifteen county and city residents stopped by, and just say, appreciate everyone coming out. Thanks, Mayor Davis, for showing up, support, and the sheriff, Steve Lawson, was there. So thank y'all for coming out. That's all I've got, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gilbert?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Thompson?
One thing I'd like to say, Mr. Chairman, is thank the mayor for being a good negotiator with the city. That's all I have.
Uh, Commissioner Goins? Mr. Slater?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing to report today.
Commissioner Ledford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of little things. Condolences to the, uh, family of the nurse that lost her life at Vanderbilt from the helicopter crash. And I want to wish everyone a Happy Veterans Day tomorrow, and I am so glad that Lori Moultrie is back with us. And, uh, other than that, Mr. Chairman, oh, one more thing. Uh, Sunday, I went to, uh, Walmart, and Brenda Lawson and her crew was there. Andy was there, uh, doing the, uh, uh, what is it? Empty Stocking Fund? Empty Stocking Fund for the children, and I think it's a great thing that Ms. Lawson does. I appreciate her doing that. Thank y'all, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers, please.
Seventh district's doing well, Mr. Chairman. Nothing to report today.
Thank you. We'll now move along to the agenda items. Agenda item A, Commissioner Rogers, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution to rezone from R-one rural residential district to C-two general commercial district. The property is located at Georgetown Road and identified by tax map zero-two-six-G, Group C, parcel zero-zero-one dot zero-zero and zero-zero-two dot zero-zero. You can see this on page two and three of your agenda packet today. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I place this, uh, on the next voting session next week. Um, I will not be there, Mr. Chairman, but I've asked Commissioner Collins if he would read the agenda or read this item for me next week, uh, on, in that voting session. Bentley is here today, uh, to speak on it as well. Um, it was passed unanimously by the Bradley County Regional Planning Commission. If you have any questions, Bentley's here.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you. We'll now move along to communications from the audience. I'll recognize and allow five minutes to anyone wishing to speak. Is there anyone that would, please?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm Harold Bear. I'm a resident of the city and the county. I am, uh, been a part of Cleveland since nineteen sixty-three. Nineteen sixty-eight, I was an employee here, making fifteen dollars an hour doing work when the salary was dollar sixty an hour, minimum wage, working in East Cleveland to ameliorate, uh, the conditions around the city dump, which is now gone. As some of you may remember, there were people who lived in or were near the city dump and who took things from the trucks as they unloaded to eat. That's how they survived, and sold the things that they could scavenge. I'm a sociologist from the University of Virginia, an urban sociologist, and, um, I've done consultation work with several cities, and I'm not here to solicit anything for myself. Please be clear of that. Um, in Charlottesville, I became heavily involved, Charlottesville, Virginia. I was a inner-city pastor of a large church that grew to be more than twenty nations, two English services and five ethnic services, and I was the most involved pastor of the city with our C refugee organization, bringing in refugees and working with those who are distressed in the city. I actually founded a, a nonprofit and bought property in inner city, built a building and built another, uh, remodeled another building, which did such social lifting area until the city bought it from us. I'm here because this is my city as it is yours and our county. I'm here because I care. I'm here because I'm respectful to you, and it is my modus operandi wherever I'm going to put my foot, to try and respect those who are in authority first. Please understand that I've previously spoken to the city council to make the similar request. There are those who are asking me to partner with them in humanitarian projects. I care. I've done that. I've been there. However, what we're doing in humanitarian projects only produces what we have. If we want change in the area, in the blighted areas that we well know are here in the city and the county, it will take something different. That's why I am here. I've been to the jail. I've been to numerous social organizations. We're putting, as I understand it, about twenty-four percent of our budget to the jail, nine million dollars. I'm here as a sociologist to share with you that that is not social lift. That is just simply doing what's necessary for the challenges we have in our community. I also ask, I said, I can put together people who can come and teach college courses here. They said, we don't have enough people that have high school degrees to teach college courses here. And I was distressed for that because I've taught in maximum borderline, maximum security prisons to inmates and to prisoners, and I know that it can have a tremendous impact. I taught twenty convicted felons under double-barrel shotgun guard psychology, if you please. So I have a simple request predicated on this, that out publicly, and I don't mean to be offensive about this, but it, I think you need to hear this. Numerous people that I've spoken to have said, well, the city and the county don't get along. I want you to prove them wrong. I want you to put a hand across and say, let's convince the public. Now, if that's not true, I'm wonderfully happy, but I vow to you that an hour before I set, put in here today, I was told that again by a leading organization in the city. And so I would say to you that it's our city. It's our county. What if you were to come together with the city and appoint a ad hoc task force for one year of public citizens, not government officials, not you, but leading citizens in the community, and ask them to come up with noble ideas how to change the blighted areas? Now, I've looked at the budget for the city, and the city budget does not allow for any infrastructure change in the common bu- budget for the blighted areas. I ask you, how many of you ride through the blighted areas at ten, eleven, twelve o'clock at night? I do. I'm a sociologist. I research. Before I speak, I want to know what I'm talking about. I'm there. I see people in the rain at midnight scavenging through trash. Not our city. Please, ladies and gentlemen, not our city. Let's do something about it. So I'm asking you to please, one, think about it, talk about it, put together a plan, talk to the city, put twenty-five or thirty-five thousand dollars, because you're gonna need a little bit of cushion to do some consult- consultation, invite some groups in. Just, that's twelve, fifteen thousand dollars for you, twelve, fifteen thousand for the city. Give it a respectable budget so that it's actually sensible, and get some people in the community. Now, I vow to you, I could already tell you some leading businesses who are saying, Dr. Bear, we are with you. I vow to you that someone stopped me in the hallway about an hour ago and said, what are you doing? I said, they said, please, I want to pray for you before you go in. I believe in prayer, but I believe it takes feet to get something done. Yes, I do, and I know what can be done. I'll finish with saying this. In Charlottesville, there was a blighted area. I became deeply concerned because I bought property in that area, and what I saw broke my heart. So we bought property, and then we discovered that there were black people who were walking two to three blocks to go to school and had been for fifty to sixty years. They climbed trees and watched white boys play football. And then one day, with the property that we purchased and built and remodeled, we poured a sidewalk up to a fence, called in professional fence cutters, and called in the television and newspaper and radio, and we had professional fence cutters cut the fence and had people who had climbed trees to watch football game walk through a fence, and it was one of the most dynamic moments. It made big news. Thank you very much. I know my time's up. I hope that you will consider this and do something about our blighted areas. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, this morning, we have, uh, our planner with us, Bentley, Bentley Thomas, and also Josh from the road department. And, uh, the partial property or the property we're talking about, uh, want to talk about is on Parkville Road. And, uh, about the permits, uh, the road department, myself, went out and looked at that property, and, uh, there'd been a lot of work done there, and alwa- already done some paving, and I understand there's, uh, been no permits for that. And, uh, if so, I'd just like to, for Bentley to, and Josh, uh, collaborate on that, if they would, please.
I guess from the, from the planning commission's perspective, all we have done with the, it's old Parksville Ridge subdivision, was we approved a preliminary plat in twenty-twenty-four, which allows them to start, you know, working towards either building the road or bonding the road and going along with the final plat. We've done that. The developer, David May, came and spoke to me. It's been a little bit over a year ago, and said he was wanting to bond the first fourteen lots of the subdivision. I can't remember. There's like thirty or forty lots in there. And I said, you could do that. We'd get with Josh. We calculate the bond, or the bond for the road, and then he can move forward with it. I haven't heard anything from him since then, and the next thing I know, you've, Howard, you called me, and then Josh called me and said it was paved. And, I mean, Josh can speak to it. They haven't reached out to the road department at all, which they're supposed to, and they're supposed to do core drilling and compaction test and.
Yeah, uh, so there's a number of things that are supposed to be done as far as inspections go out there before they can pave, and none of those were done. Um, and it might come down to miscommunication, um, between the road department and the developer. Um, but we're in the developer. He didn't know that he needed all these inspections done, and he went out and hired a third-party inspector. And according to him and, uh, his contractor, all the inspections have been done, uh, that the road department would need. The road department hasn't gotten those yet, so I don't know the reason for that, but I just talked to them last week. They said they'd send it over. We still don't have it. Um, so I don't, I don't know if, I'll take their word for it, that, uh, they did hire a third-party inspector out there, but regardless of that, the road department wants to come out there, do their own inspections, and, um, you know, we'll see what happens with it, but it might end up being a situation where we can't recommend that the road gets taken in because we don't know what kind of road they built, or, you know, maybe we get them to bond it anyway. Um, so we're, um, we're communicating with the developer. I'm calling him every week or so now, and, um, there's actually two roads that are in that development. They have done, they've done half the paving on one of the roads, and I've told them everything that we'll need, uh, for the other road whenever they get around to it. So I think we're, we're caught up with the developer, him knowing everything he needs to get done. Um, and I think, you know, going forward, um, we're actually, next week, we're meeting with the planning commission, um, to just kind of reiterate, reiterate with the planning commission that the road department has to talk to the developer, uh, to do a, a pre-construction meeting with the road department, uh, for those inspections going forward.
Uh, the reason this was brought up, I guess, uh, we went over and looked at that, and also there's been some people that own property that connect to that same area, and they were wondering about the, the water runoff and, uh, whatever, and, uh, how, how it would affect their property. So, anyway, I, I think they're looking for answers as what permits they have and, uh, what the water runoff is. And, uh, of course, I know they have a holding pond at the bottom of the hill there, but, uh, they're real concerned about that, so I'd just like to have some answers on that where we could get back with those people that own the property connected to that, and we could give them an answer. That's all I have, Chairman. One other question, Bentley, is, uh, if, uh, Okoye's got a, uh, motorum on sewer, so, uh, what do they do about sewer? Do they, can they put septic tanks in there and just, or what?
Well, you have to state a perusal, but, I mean, they were wanting to do townhomes and smaller lots. That'd have to reconfigure the whole subdivision. Um, but no, I mean, the way they've got it configured is configured for sewer. So if they can't get sewer, we can't issue a permit. And to answer your question, we haven't, we haven't issued any permits in there. I mean.
Well, that's what I, that's what I've heard, and also.
Yeah.
They went out and paved, and I don't even think they got it, uh, permitted at all, or the road department even looked at the property before it was ever paved. And they went and paved. Now they put curbing in, and, uh, I went over the last time it rained so hard, and, uh, we've got some, uh, we've got some water problems there, too, where it's running out on the county. And, uh, it's the same situation we got on Hancock Road where it runs in that lady's yard, runs off the hill in the lady's yard. It's the same scenario. So, anyway, we've, uh, we've got problems there if we don't get them, uh, get them permitted and get them straightened out.
Yes, Josh, can I have a question about Eagle Run? Have y'all been up there and looked at that situation? Because it sounds like we've got the same problem there as we have at, at the, just Howard's area.
Yeah, that one's a little bit different because it's a private subdivision, but, um, so they're, they've got their catch basins there, and.
That's what I thought. That's, I guess it's a problem we're starting to have. It seems like we're having this problem more and more. Um, I guess my point is, the planning commission hasn't started, but do y'all have to mark or sign off on all plans before they start developing? Or is that something the road department doesn't necessarily do yet, Bentley?
Okay. So I think with a, a private subdivision, the roads are supposed to be fully completed before they can start building, or they're supposed to, uh, have a bond before they can start construction. And, um, with it being, you know, uh, a few years back, I think they started it in like two thousand one, or it, it's, it's pretty old, and it's had a, a few different phases in there. Yeah, so I think that's maybe part of the mix-up, and it also being private. So, um, I'm not a hundred percent sure on everything. I went back. There was records from around two thousand one where they went in and they did everything they were supposed to do as far as inspections, but some of those phases, um, uh, they were missing inspection records, so I'm not a hundred percent sure what happened with that.
Well, when they do a new phase, Bentley, do they have to come back before the planning commissioner? I'm gonna have, you're gonna have to be up there where you talk. I got a lot of questions.
Yes, they do. And they're doing it in like phase four, but phase four, A, B, C, and D. And the two phases I believe that are in question are for C and for D. And the two phases I believe that are in question are for C and for D. For C, I'm pretty sure inspections were done by Matt McCarley, which was an engineer on retainer at the time when Sandra was the road superintendent. But I don't know if inspections were done in for D. But I do have written assurance from the developer that the roads will be completed.
Did he give you a timeframe?
No. He told me it would be completed, though.
Sir?
He told me it will be completed.
I guess that's where I'm coming from. When, it looks like me, and I have nothing against builders, but it looks like me, we're getting a lot of this commissioners all over the whole county. It looks like we've got a problem somewhere, you know, we get builders just building on their own and not really getting anything accomplished as far as taking care of the constituents of that area.
Well, I think Old Parksville Ridge, which is the one on Old Parksville, with them just going out and paving without contacting the road department, it's a whole different situation than Eagle Creek with private roads, where, for the most part, they did contact the road department. It just seems like they didn't in the last phase.
Is the road department, y'all supposed to sign off on all plans or plots or plans before they start?
I believe there's a spot for the road superintendent to sign off, saying that the roads have been completed.
Yeah, when we...
So if he doesn't, if he doesn't sign off on it, that y'all hadn't approved it yet, can they go in and start their project?
I don't think so.
No. But the roads, the road department doesn't sign off on private roads.
But if there's six houses on a, in a subdivision, six houses on the road, doesn't that fall under our subdivisions that the road department will take, start taking it in or be responsible for it?
Yes, if it's a public road.
Six houses?
Yeah. I mean, if it's on a public road...
So if I understand Eagle Run, is there six houses on that road, but nobody's been doing anything with it?
I don't understand your question. Six houses on the phase that's not... I think there's ten houses under construction on that road, if I'm not mistaken. That's how many building permits are out right now.
But are they, again, I'll ask, do they supposed to come back to planning before they start another phase?
Yeah, they will, but this is the very last phase, it won't be built out anymore.
You hope?
No, I don't think there's any property to build out anymore.
I guess where I'm coming from, I think the road department's getting called in between and rock and a hard place here, it looks like to me, without them having any knowledge of these, these plans being developed, and they don't know what's going on.
Well, once we approve a preliminary plat, the developer's supposed to go to the road department and submit plans to them. They don't submit plans to me.
But is that happening, Josh?
Well, I'll say this, and I went back and looked at the different plats that they've got for the different phases, and I think the most recent one was around 2018. And where the road superintendent would sign off, saying that these roads are up to standards and everything, they just wrote NA in there. So they were saying, you know, they were basically saying the road superintendent doesn't have to sign off on, on this because it's a private road, and I'm not sure what happened there, but...
No, but I, I was getting assurances from the county engineer at the time that they were built to county, county road spec. I didn't get those on this last phase.
That's, I guess that's where I'm coming from. You know, there's nothing, I mean, we're getting this stuff done, but nothing's happening to these people when they're not following what the rules and regulations are, sounds like to me.
Well, I mean, on the one on Old Parksville, the county doesn't have to take the road in if they don't feel like it was built to county road standard.
But meantime, Howard's got people out there getting flooded because it wasn't built to standards.
I mean, they were supposed to do a stormwater management plan with the state of Tennessee that does stormwater mitigation. I mean, I can check with TDEC to see if that was completed.
They've got, I mean, they've got a, a set of plans that were drawn up by a registered engineer. And according to him, the runoff is good. But one of the things is the, the catch basins, they've only done the first set of asphalt. So the catch basins are still sitting a little bit above the road out there on Old Parksville, some of them, not all of them. So it's, it's not draining as good as it will once they put the, the next set of asphalt on there.
What's recourse in if they're not following the proper procedure?
Well, we wouldn't take the road in, or we wouldn't recommend that the road gets taken in.
Yeah, but that's not helping these folks, is it?
Right.
I don't guess we got any procedures in that we can go back and, on the builder for anything?
Well, I, I think you can do that, but, I mean, the county, the county... Let's see. You could go after the builder, I'll say that, but it would be...
How and who?
Well, I would think that the property owner would reach out to the developer and tell them the problems that they have, and the developer would need to fix that problem for them. I mean...
But it doesn't look like me, anybody's holding any accountability.
Well, these were, if, so, like I said, we're taking their word for it, that they've hired a third-party inspector out there to do inspection of the roads. They've got a licensed engineer that has designed these plans, and he's put his stamp of approval on these plans. So, you know, they've still got some work to do out there, and they still need to get us those inspection reports. But if they don't get us those inspection reports, then the county can refuse to take those roads in, and the developer wouldn't be able to build out. So it's, he, he would want to get those roads taken in so that he can build out these lots.
Now, just, to me, it looks like we got some problems that I'm not aware of, I guess, or I am aware, but it sounds like that, I think the road department should force these people to have to come to y'all to get signed off, make sure, and with your signature, not, not an NA or something like that.
Right, and that's, like I said, like Bentley was saying, it's a different situation with that being a private road, and I'm not sure what happened in the past. But with this Old Parksville Road, they are aware now of everything as far as inspections that they need to do to get the road department's recommendation that that road, that the road gets taken in so that they can build out that subdivision.
So you still don't have any recourse on Eagle Run?
On Eagle Run, the Eagle Creek...
Eagle Creek, I'm sorry.
As far as what, I mean, the county road department can do on a private road, I think that'd be a question for Crystal, maybe, but, yeah, I would say ask Crystal on that one.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Question for you, Josh. You said that the county could go after the developer, or the citizen who's having the issues can go after the developer?
Well, I mean, I think that'd be a question for Crystal.
Uh, because I was going to ask you, is that, because that's the statement you made. I was just wondering if that was a, a legal statement of, like, on a legal sense? And that has been cleared through the county attorney, or if that was just your personal...
Yeah, that's just me throwing that out there.
Just a personal opinion?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Josh, one other question. Can you do a compaction test on that road since they've already put a, a layer of asphalt on it?
No, we can't.
But, in other words, you wouldn't, you couldn't take the road in then, when it's finished?
Well, like I said, this is according to the developer and his contractor. They hired a company to come out there and proof-roll it and do compaction testing. And, like I said, we still don't have record of that, and I don't know why. But if they don't get us that record, then I don't think we should take it in as a county road.
Okay, that's all I have.
And I don't know who it would be, but I, I just think we need to give it some thought. That's all, anybody else have any questions? That's all I have, thank you. You all. All right, we started on communications from the audience. We had one speaker. I went back to the agenda item for Commissioner Thompson. Do we have anyone else from the audience that would like to speak? Yes, please.
Hello? Last week I was going to present this, but there was a lot more going on in the meeting, and I didn't think it was real appropriate. So Halloween night, my husband and I attended the Bradley County Halloween Block Party arriving around 5:30 PM. Our purpose was to hand out brochures on child safety and Christian tracts. We'd never been to this block party, we were not prepared for what we witnessed. If you watch the Facebook videos and advertisements, it made it look like a wholesome fun time for children. Far from it. After being there until 7:30 before the hardcore stuff was celebrated, we observed that this event was not designed for children fun. The only thing going on with the kids was distribution of candy. No bounce houses, pony rides, games. We were saddened by what the children were exposed to who were brought by their parents. The event was mostly attended by adults, grandmas and grandpas dressed up in costumes, mommy and daddies dressed up in sometimes gruesome and monstrous attire. Some were not, some were not, and others were in creative costumes. Then there was what looked like the brothel had been loosed on the town square. Their dress was absolutely disgusting, breasts and ass were liberally displayed. They, the rest were all adults dressed in sometimes hideous and vulgar costumes and makeup. One was a huge yellow phallus. Does this really sound like something you would want your child exposed to? We noted that the whole time we were there, hundreds of people were just walking around the square, circling around and around, displaying themselves. Please note, I tried to reserve a booth, but was soundly denied based on the words of the coordinator, quote, "that only official nonprofits or vendors were allowed to have booths." Not only that, but I was told that they just let anyone, they don't just let anyone have a booth because they didn't know what kind of message they would be sending to the people. Let that sink in. By 7:30 PM, we had distributed most of their brochures and tracts. We were quite disgusted by what we had seen, and we left. This event is occultic in nature. The churches need to unite to take the event down along with the idol of Tall Betsy. It will take the unity of the Christian churches to do this. I challenge the churches of this community to stop this debauchery taking place in the center of our community under the guise of a party for children. We are a Christian community that doesn't want this evil gathering taking over our town square. I would also suggest that Main Street events not be allowed to be directing events that display such unwholesome content. They obviously don't know the meaning of wholesome. I am surprised that those of you who call yourselves Christians aren't more vocal about this. This isn't child's play. And today, I will declare and decree, in the name of Jesus Christ, that this Halloween Block Party and the edifice of Tall Betsy be taken down and be no more. Amen. Thank you.
Any questions, comments? Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? The next meeting will be the voting session Monday, November the 17th at 12:00 PM here in the courthouse. Athletic Field Improvements Ad Hoc Committee immediately following this meeting. County offices are closed tomorrow, November the 11th, in observance of Veterans Day. Veterans Day ceremony tomorrow at 11:00 AM, Waterville Baptist Church. Board of Education meeting tomorrow, 5:00 PM Central Office. Truesdale Art Show, November the 13th, 6:00 PM.